I apologize for being a little late. Let's begin, we have met in closed session and you have established, we have a quorum. Let's go ahead and begin the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the approval of minutes.
I will move that we approve the minutes for the July 21 business in closed sessions.
I'll second it.
Julia Beckman?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Nancy Kupka?
Hi. Thank you. It's time for the first reception of visitors. This is the opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the board on any item on the agenda tonight. Hearing none, we'll move on. Recommendations and reports of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Kupka. The first report is an annual report the administration makes about energy conservation. And just to remind the board, District 99 has been in the energy conservation business for well over a decade and has frankly saved in cost avoidance hundreds of thousands, maybe even millions of dollars, just in terms of implementing green technology, changing behaviors, so on. And this is, responsibility falls under Mr. Collier's realm. And he will introduce his partner and make the report.
Thank you, Dr. McDonald. Yes, my partner in crime is Ms. Lisa McCartney. She's a South High science teacher, also part of our Energy Committee and energy technician for District 99. Kind of an overview of tonight's presentation. I'll start it off and Lisa's going to do the bulk of this. And please, if you have questions at the end, we'll answer anything that you have. Energy conservation measures for facility improvement. We'll talk about that. Upcoming projects is more like projects that are going on right now this summer. Savings and cost analysis, environmental impact, and our program's success. And it's always good to give good news to everyone in the community. Facility improvement. Lighting projects from last summer are paying off as projected. These were our large gymnasiums. We switched out our mercury vapor lighting to new LED lighting along with occupancy sensors, and we're saving upwards of $8,000 a year in electric. Ongoing projects. Right now, the North small gym, that was 1,000 watt mercury vapors, they're switched out to LED lighting. The project's almost completed. South High auditorium, LED lighting along with controls, and our dehumidification system at North High. The two grants that we're working on right now are the DCEO grants for the lighting projects. We already received the $50,000 grant for the maintenance grant for the pool units. We had our meeting last week. We decided this summer to have an energy team workshop. Last week we met. Kind of brainstorming proactive environment and completion of future energy conservation measures. Very positive meeting. We'll get more into that, but the group had a lot of good ideas, and I think I'm going to do that each year from now on and kind of have a workshop over the summer to kick off that new year, kind of reviewing the past year and looking forward to some new ideas for the upcoming year. Increasing student involvement, and that's where I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. She's got some exciting news of what our students have come to her with and what we're going to do this year with meeting them. Lisa?
We have had a successful program. Mark was talking about cost avoidance before, and we're at the point now where over the life of the program. We'll get to these numbers in a minute, but I just finished putting in bills for last month, and we're over $6 million of costs that we've avoided in the about 12 years that we've had the program, so that's a big thing to celebrate. We'll get to that in a second. But talking about student involvement, my mission when I started last year was to get students more involved in, I want there to be a culture in the district of sustainability and conservation and really good energy practices, but that means everybody has to think about it all the time. We've been for years battling these elephants and working on mechanical systems and increasing the efficiency of the buildings and how it's used, and that's great, but the kids are chomping at the bit to have some input. We've got groups in both buildings that I'm aware of that really want to be heard and has some ideas that I have heard, but we decided at the, at our brainstorming session over the summer that we're going to invite them to talk to the whole energy team and see how maybe we can implement some of the things they'd like to do, and maybe there are ways that they can be useful to us in the buildings. For example, I think it'd be a great idea, I don't know if it'll fly or not, but I think they can take on a small piece of the building auditing process and walk the buildings after school and make sure that teachers are being held accountable by turning everything off without, you know, let's say a teacher leaves the room and the building's shut down, the lights are out, the computers are off, it's shut down for the night, and a club comes in and forgets on their way out. It might be 11 o'clock at night before a custodian that's cleaning gets to that.
Right.
And these kids could go through earlier and buy us hours of runtime, which translates to me into dollars and cents, and it shows up, you know, when I'm looking at utility costs. So I think we've got lots of ways left that kids could help us squeeze some more dollars out of the buildings, that are little things like that that'll all add up. So I'm excited to get them involved, super excited. We also have, remember that this year for the first time, we've got the Advanced Placement Environmental, AP Environmental course that's being taught at both schools, and those teachers are excited about getting their classrooms involved in practices throughout the building. So we've got some good ways to get kids involved. I'm excited to see that moving forward. And we, I don't know exactly where it's going to land, but it's going to be fun to see, and it's a blast to get the kids involved in the program, you know, and it becomes ethic. I think it's ethic for us, you know, from a maintenance standpoint and a planning standpoint and facility improvement, it's all we think about, it's one of the big things we think about, is doing things in a conservative manner, but to get the kids involved in passing it on is going to be huge. That's about it. So if we're, what you're looking at on that screen right there is over the life of the program, that was a number I was, I was playing with in March before summer started. Over the life of our program, it was 25% less that we're paying for utilities now than we did when we started the program. And I think on the next screen, you know, that's a long time. 10 years is kind of a tough thing to think about. What about recently? So you can see there were, for the past five years only, where we spent 33% less than we did. So that's, we're getting better at it than we were, and we keep finding little things to do to get better. And it's one of those things where if, if we're not thinking about it all the time, we go backwards. So it's, it's nice that we keep it on the radar and revisit these things all the time. You can see the program savings on the right-hand side at the bottom there. Behavioral changes are always little pieces, you know, that's what I'm talking about, about getting students involved and helping us improve our behavior about shutting down, because people with all good intentions space out once in a while, or they do it and somebody else comes in and it's, and undoes their good work, so just staying on it is important. Synergistic is the consulting firm that way back in the day, the district hired to implement, the consulting firm to implement this program. And they were paid for in the first four years of the program, and they continue to be very, very supportive. I took the building foremen, a couple of them, to the training session that was in the city here in Chicago, just a couple weeks, was it last week?
Last week.
Last week. And they were pretty impressed and they learned a lot of stuff, so we're looking forward to now the, we used to have to travel to three of these every, every year, and I'm, I've been to, what, 35 of these things? It's getting a little, you know, so I don't think it's necessary for me to go to too many anymore, but it's great to have these guys going to get a better picture of, a bigger picture in their mind of just making sure they're running the automated systems properly in the buildings and things like that. So they, they had very positive feedback from them, they enjoyed it. And the company is doing a training, we're obligated to do at least one of these conferences a year, and there's always going to be one local now, so they're going to do the Chicago for the Midwest territory training, so we don't have to pay for traveling anymore, which is nice. And again, we're, all we can do to squeeze out reductions and running equipment, electric motors, you know, turning off exhaust fans at night, you know, that kind of stuff. We keep finding ways to improve. This is my favorite thing. This is how we benefit from continuing to do this program. The more we save, the more stays used for education instead of running machines. Natural resources, we're conserving those. We're, again, this thing more than pays for itself every single year, even more so now. And it's designed to go on and on and on and on with support from the consulting firm, which is kind of neat. It's wonderful to get perspective from around the country. You know, it's a, there are regional breakout sessions of these training things where we get a group of maybe 30 people in a room from Indiana, Illinois, Michigan, Wisconsin, and we all have problems in common that are weather-related and, you know, having to do with running HVAC systems. Does that make sense? So, and they're tough to solve sometimes, so it's kind of neat to have perspective, you know, what are you doing that we're not, you know? Or what are we doing that you are not? And it's a big sharing, it's very, it's been hugely helpful. We get ideas from that all the time. Getting better and better. But again, this is, everybody contributing that's making this work, but we benefit in a bunch of different ways. This is a fun thing. I, I just love these numbers because they talk. It, it kind of hits home. You're taking three-quarters of a million passenger cars off the road for a year is the equivalent of what we've saved. Planting all those trees, you know, reducing the carbon footprint, it's kind of a neat thing to look at, and it, that really speaks to kids a lot. They're learning things like that out of textbooks, how to calculate those numbers, so when they see what we've done in the district, it's kind of impressive and they know it's real. You want to talk about this one? Because this one's huge to me. I almost get worked up talking about this one.
This means a lot to me, too. The people, it's everybody. It's teamwork, the entire district, from school board to our community, to our staffs, to our teachers. We thank you for supporting our group and our cause and what we're doing, so many thanks.
And none of it works without everybody pitching in a little, so it's huge to say that thank you, I think, right now for, to everybody. It's a big thing. Continued success as a result of everybody's, everybody's involvement. So thanks to everybody.
Wonderful.
Short and sweet enough?
I'd just like to say thank you for doing this, for saving us money, for doing the right thing, and for bringing science alive for students.
Thanks.
What a trifecta.
And I'm on fire about this stuff, you know, I'm the biggest tree hugger around, I think. I've got colleagues that are just as big a tree huggers as I am, but I think, you know, just, just having that ethic is, is fun. It gets kids excited about being that way, too. They know they've got to do it.
Right.
It's just part of, part of the natural course.
That's wonderful, is it's lifelong learning for them, and it'll be something that they can continue doing their entire lives.
Exactly.
And, gosh, it's a shame we just can't send that message to some of these developing countries, too.
Another tidbit, she talked earlier about, last year I went to San Antonio for the conference, and one of the, we are the leaders for LED lighting in gymnasiums and parking lots. Even last year, it was, I got stopped and talked to many folks throughout the country, high school level, on, wow, what are you doing? So we're, we are way ahead. Do you not agree?
Yep.
In our gymnasiums, outside, parking lots, and everyone's catching up, so kind of leading the way. So I didn't happen that we're doing that. So thank you for your support with that.
You know, every year they're looking for people to speak at IASB. We have a lot of things we could speak, we could talk about.
Really?
LED lighting, that's my middle name.
Something that's not in your report, because it's really not energy, but when we think about being green, our, our collection of stormwater and reuse of that, and, you know, just about everywhere else, not just in the United States, but in the world, water is a huge concern, as important as energy is, and, and we're addressing that here, too. So we're really walking the talk.
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty great.
And decisions like that, what the facilities are made, because we've got this ethic. So that's, that's a big thing. It's not just about return on investment, it's what are we doing that's responsible?
Right.
You know, so that's a big one. Window farming, I'll just give myself the plug.
Window farming?
That's another thing. It's like a sustainable practice. You're not going to be able to farm food forever, you know, it's the same, it's all part of the same ethic.
Yeah.
So it's neat, it's good stuff. You will.
I've been very pleased over the years since this program began, and Lisa's been here since the beginning, to see that nobody, you haven't gotten tired of it.
Well, it's fun.
And our staff seems to buy into it more and the kids do. It's something that really has grown instead of, oh, well, we did that last year, so don't have to worry about it anymore. But it's, it's really great to see the, the growth and the...
Well, and, you know, people changes, we have people, we have leadership changes, there are changes in human resources, so there are always new people to bring up, you know, to kind of convince of with the ethic and to educate, and it's just, you can't, if you let it go, it goes away, literally.
Does indeed.
Every new crop of kids. So at the beginning of every school year, you know, the associate principals will get up and remind everybody that we've got a program and remind them of their responsibilities, so every year, the whole new crop understands, you know, faculty, kids, you know, the teachers say it in the classrooms, the department chairs have expectations that they reiterate to staff at their beginning of year meetings about remembering to shut down, so it carries forth.
Hopefully it's helping parents out at home, too. Kids turning the lights off.
Always that bathroom light thing, yeah.
I still have that problem every now and then, but it's...
It really does. It becomes habitual. Mark Stalen will turn your office light off if you walk out. So it's habit forming, and you're absolutely right, Mike.
I don't know. I walk down the halls and I hear the switches click.
Lisa's coming. Turn the lights off!
I recognize your footsteps.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you again.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great news.
Okay, the Food Service National Lunch, National School Lunch Report.
All right, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Mark. I'm not going to throw the graphs up there, I'm just going to, and I know, I'm not going to read the memo to you, I think you had a chance to look at it, but I just want to hit the high points, because really this was just, as we started to put the information together, we knew that, at least it dawned on us, that the, the real evidence or the real decision-making will probably have to be deferred until like the winter, you know, until Quest, the new provider, has an opportunity to get in and get to know our kids and really implement the program the way they like to implement these programs, and that's even that's under the National School Lunch rules, and so...
Can I just interrupt for a second? I'm sorry, but just in case people aren't aware of what this is, what you're talking about.
Sure.
The question was asked whether or not we should participate.
You're right, I'll give that back.
I'm sorry.
I'll start again. The opening part of the memo was, was, it was based on the change to a different, the low bid of the food service provider, Quest. We, we got into a conversation about whether or not we, one of the benefits and non-benefits of being in the National School Lunch Program, NSLP, and noting that another large high school system in the northern, north from here, had, it decided to go out on a trial, they did it on a pilot basis this last year, this current year, getting out of the school lunch program, and primarily, I think it was publicized, that it was for them not liking the, the very stringent healthy meal requirements under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, federal Act, which has now been implemented through the National School Lunch Program. It takes effect this year. And so they were kind of rejecting that more stringent follow-through and were going alone. And in many schools, I won't say, I still think it's a minority of schools that have anything close to our numbers of free and reduced kids. I don't know of any that have our level that are, are not in the program, but there are schools in the suburban area that are not in, under the National School Lunch Program, and it does free up their menu choices, and so it does give them different options. And so, thank you, Nancy, for having me give that backdrop for anybody listening through the tape. So what I did is just pulled some of the data from points we had from Aramark. I started with 2007 because it was pre-recession. I think the recession is a big part of this. Certainly it's driven up our free and reduced numbers, but even before the recession in 2007, we never had more than 50% of our kids, and likely much lower than that, actually getting a full lunch out of our cafeterias. The numbers that you see, and anytime you see the green bar in our, in the memo or the, anything that involves the paid lunch students, it doesn't necessarily involve a type A lunch, doesn't involve a full lunch, because if it's a paid student, they can buy à la carte items, they can just be, we could have 75% of our kids actually walking through the line, but it's the cumulative total of all of those costs divided by, I think the figure is $3.04 now, creates an eligible meal that we reimburse Aramark for. That's how we pay for our food service program. And there's different models to consider, but that's the one that we're under, and that's the one that you are, you are under if you're in the National School Lunch Program. You reimburse them per a meal or a meal equivalent, and the meal equivalent is defined by enough à la carte items that add up to $3.04. So it's really hard to see and say how many meals, full meals, and how many kids are actually relying on our program just for it, but we know it's, it's probably much less than, than 40%, because 40% includes meal equivalents. So there's, there is a minority of kids that actually have been using the program, even going back historically. And it could be a number of factors historically that we could, I mean, the queuing is, I talked to a couple employees who had kids go through the program, and Karen Seaton, who was my accountant, said, my, my son just refused to wait in the lines, and the lines are too long to get through, and so I would have loved to have them buy lunch, but they weren't going to wait in those lines. And so we, you know, we do have a queuing problem at both schools, just because of the number of kids we have. And it's, it may be getting a little bit better because our enrollments are dropping a little bit, but they're going to go back the other direction again in the next 10 years, it's just projected to. So there could be other factors, but also, we have clearly seen a drop in the last two years, and that's really when a couple of things came into play. Number one, we, we did have a first layer of more stringent guidelines put in place by the National School Lunch Program, removing carbonated beverages, removing different things from the, and, and requiring whole wheat to be integrated into more of the meals. And so we saw a change there. Now, some people have said, well, that's because kids have been used to having it one way, and now we've changed the menu on it, but when the new kids come in, they're going to, it's going to be the same to them, and they'll, they'll get used to it. Well, we haven't had four years of that yet, just to prove that, and now we've changed vendors, so who knows? Another thing is, we, we did increase the price two years ago from, we had two types of meals. We had a regular type A meal for $2, and we had a premium type A meal for $2.35. The majority of the kids were buying the $2.35 meal. State Board said we had to charge $2.50 for the meal based on what they were reimbursing us, and so we made a decision, and we were able to do that over two years. So we made the decision to just, just have one type of meal, no premium, no lower meal, just one type of meal for two and a quarter. And then the next year, this last year, in 2013, 14, we had to bounce that up to second part, and that was $2.50, so that could have had an impact, along with the fact that we are still in the recession, we're starting to come out of it, but we're still, there's still a lot of families, as indicated by our number of eligible free and reduced, that are, are feeling financial issues, and that could also be a player. So we don't really know what to, what to blame the reduction on, and, and it will be interesting to see if Quest can increase the participation. They are certainly focused on that. They're really, that is their number one goal, is increase type A, even before our conversation about that. That was, that's what they saw as a key to making this a profitable center for them. And they were the low bidder, and they were clearly the low bidder, probably saving us at least $140,000 this year on the program in terms of our cost to them, by bidding a much lower meal reimbursement rate that we have to pay them for each meal. And, and so they, but they think they will be able to drive up participation in full meals and, and help us get more from the state and also drive up their own profits. So those are the keys, I think. I think we've identified some information. I think some of the, some of the problems that we're going to have or have to consider, and I, by the way, don't want this to be considered as we're going to look at this and expect to do it. I think we, I think it's going to be a very open analysis of this, because I don't want people in the community to think we're doing this yet. We're, we're just going to look at it really hard, and we have, I think, a very good player in Quest to be able to do it, because the majority of their schools are not in the school lunch program, and that's really where they feel their strength is, is making these programs work. They do feel challenged by the Healthy Kids Act. We still will need to pay, not pay, but we still will need to provide meals for free eligible students. We can certainly consider, and many schools that are not in the school lunch program also accommodate the reduced eligible students, even though you're legally not, you know, required to do that. That'd be something we would probably, you know, price in and out and consider, that's would be another consideration for us. And they also, outside of the school lunch program, will, will want to show us not just different menu items, because they're going to be able to do, have a more liberal menu that they can put together for us, and it's not bound by those guidelines, but they also have models that they can tell us, we currently do a pay, pay per meal. They also have a model where they just take over the program totally and give us a percentage of revenues off the top. Now, the downside of some of those is that we are one of the lowest meal prices in the area. There's, there's really no other school that's at 250 around us in DuPage County. Some of these schools that are not the school lunch program are up to 350 a lunch. That'd be a full dollar more than we have, and they've already said in preliminary conversations that yes, one of the outcomes is we would have to increase our, our lunch cost just to, to, to get out of the program, because...
Based on the current numbers.
Right.
Right.
And so, but, but that's one of the things, their expectation is, well, you market even with the, you know, 28% free and reduced eligible, you'd probably have to go at least $2.75 and maybe $3. So they're talking about a bump in prices, but there's, there's different ways to handle all these things. So I had another conversation with them just this last week, and they're really excited about showing us some models in early winter, maybe January, and, and I think that at that point, we can kind of just put as much as we can on the table and make a decision. There's a concern that if we did do this, we might have to go back out and rebid. There are many school districts, several school districts, I shouldn't say many, that, that do not bid their food service every year, just because they, it's a service provider and it's a, and they are able to, they just want a particular vendor, and so that's something we'd have to consider also, it'd be another factor that would come into play.
Well, I, I think, you know, if Quest is doing a good job, you know, and especially give us some more variety, you know?
Yeah, it'll be a little early, and other, like Aramark, others would say, well, hold it, if we were, had our hands untied, we could do a good job, too, because that was a constraint in Aramark's ability to, to, you know, attract kids. So, you know, when you go from a regular hamburger bun to a wheat bun, a lot of kids don't want that anymore, you know?
I just don't get that part, but it's, it's an important thing, but... I did notice the free lunches have increased, right?
Free lunches have increased.
Obviously.
Free eligible students.
They're going down, right.
Free eligible stu, and, and our other lunches have dropped. Now, it could be that those kids that were in the paid before are now in the free group.
Yeah.
But overall, we've lost, if you, that's why I did the first graph, when you put them all together, we've dropped 4% overall. So there's, there's definitely a loss overall, even though there's probably some shifting going on from the paid to the, to the other.
And so when will we get those numbers of what this year is going to be like?
Well, we don't have, we don't have all of our free and reduced eligible hand yet, but, I mean, we'll know by December when we do that, and that'll be a factor, too, if it's gone up again.
Right.
Or if it's, it's holding...
Or maybe, you know, it's improving.
Yeah, some of the, some of the increase in numbers, though, is, and every school is experiencing this, that they've, I mentioned this a year or so ago, and when we renewed the food service, I think, two years ago, the state has gone to a direct certification program, and so they're, they're giving us information of, about kids that they have in their system that are either Medicaid eligible, or are in the SNAP program, or food stamps, or are foster, in foster care. And all of those kids and all of their, their siblings are automatically enrolled as free, and they download that. And if a parent was coming to us and not applying for that, didn't really care about that, didn't want to be in the program, we didn't know about it. But now the state downloads that information, requires us to download it, and requires us to make them free or reduced based on the guidelines. So that has been one of the drivers of this.
That's interesting.
And we've had, and a handful, I won't say a lot, but we've had a handful of parents who call and say, I don't want to be in the program, I know you put me in it, but take me out. And, and they...
Are we allowed to do that, then, if...
Oh, yes, absolutely. And we give them the right to option out of the program, and what also happens, if you look at it, even though the eligibility is, we've never had 100% of the eligible students...
No.
...participating. They just don't participate. You can, they can be in the program, but they can still go through the line and pay and say, "I don't want to, I don't want it to be free or reduced." So there's always that option. And that may have been happening all along for those, for those students. Sometimes they might come in and get the waiver for their fees, but don't want to do it for the lunch program, even though it's a very, a not obvious-
Right.
-situation. By going to the, the system to pay rather than handling cash at their, and having, having them have an account with meal pay, it's, it's not obvious at all as to what kids are free or reduced, unless they're taking meals and sometimes, you know.
So, in your memo, you talked about the fact that if we, today, if we got rid of free and reduced lunch, we'd have to offset almost five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, right. We get reimbursed by the, by the federal government and state about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So is it the thought that by raising this, the meal, the cost of a meal, that would compensate for that?
Well, that would cover part of it, but it could be increased sales. If, if we were to get more of our students to pay for that, there would be more revenue for the program. Quest would have to look real hard to see if they would take us on that reimbursement type basis. So there are options that could change that, the mix of the students participating in the program. That's, and that's what we kind of want to see with Quest this year, to see what, if their participation starts to go the other way.
Yeah, just, we have, if, if you look at the stats we have here, it's been a steady increase in free and reduced lunch, and a steady decrease in the number of paid lunches we're serving, to the point where in six, seven years ago, we had nineteen hundred paid lunches served per day, and as of last year, we were down to eight hundred and eighty-four. That's huge. And then if you, if you look at the percentages, we talk about thirty-five percent of our students taking a, a lunch. That means we have sixty-five percent not, choosing not to participate. And, and if you could raise that percentage, that thirty-five percentage, or take that sixty-five percent down, or, I mean, if we got to a fifty-fifty. I mean, you, and, because this is my, my thing, and I, I think, I suspect some of the other board members share, I'm, I'm very interested in the kids having nutritious lunch, very interested. And I think that the, that the guidelines that, that the government is putting out and asking us to follow are, are laudable. I mean, it's, these are great things to aspire to. However, we have sixty-five percent of the students saying, "I'm not going to participate." And so what are they eating? They're, I'm just surmising that what they're bringing to, to lunch is maybe not as nutritious as it could be. And so maybe, I mean, the best situation, I think, in the world is if we, if, if Quest was, was really good and was able to increase participation, and we could continue to stay in the National School Lunch Program, to me, that's the, that would be great. However, if, if they can't, but we, we discover that possibly they could, through their experience, increase our participation greatly, you have economies of scale such that our cost to offset those free and reduced lunches might not be nearly as much as what it would be if, if the numbers stay what they are now. So I-
But I just, just wanted, because like, if you look at the numbers from nineteen hundred to nine hundred, are those apples, did we have à la carte at that time as well?
Yes.
Is it eight hundred and ninety-four full lunch versus nineteen hundred full lunch?
Yes.
Okay.
And you look at that, you know, yes, we had a, a down these last two years, but you look at those overall trends, and that, that blue keeps growing, and that green keeps, keeps shrinking, and I'm sure we have some migration, but it's, it's definitely a trend that's, that's concerning, and, and nutritious lunch program can only be effective if the kids are eating it.
That's right.
What's exciting about Quest, though, is that they're using a lot more natural ingredients-
From scratch.
-from scratch versus, you know, a lot of processed food. Right there, I think that will entice a lot of students to, to eat more of our lunches, because, you know, I mean, let's face it, education is out there, that, you know, all these additives and all the preservatives and, and everything that are in the foods, you, you don't want it, you know? And so maybe a lot of people are, are kind of hesitating to buy some of those foods, because especially some of the colors are not natural.
Glowing orange macaroni and cheese.
They're going to be very aggressive about it. They've added the fountain service, which is one thing, and they're going to give a twelve ounce pop, or twelve ounce, not pop, twelve ounce like Sobey carbonated flavored drink. And they said that's a big draw. Kids like the Sobey, and, and if they go and get a type A lunch, they're going to give them a twelve ounce drink. So they're going to do things to promote a type A lunch.
I think, exciting.
There's still healthy alternatives, and, and so we're excited to see how, how it pans out for them.
So are you saying we'll hear back more in January?
Right. We've asked them, and I talked with Mike McTaggart, who's the president of the company, again this week, and he's, he thinks by January he'll be able to put together different models for us to look at, and, and he'll recommend one for us, I'm sure, because he's got a lot of experience his way, but we'd have to look at all the factors and the pieces that would change because of that.
Another quick question is about the breakfast program, because that's also part of the free and reduced.
It is part of this, I didn't include that, but that is a big part of that.
Yeah, because I didn't see it in here, and so I was just curious. Right now, maybe you don't even know these numbers, but are the same number of students who take advantage of the free and reduced lunches, are they also taking advantage of the breakfast, or is it a smaller percentage?
They are, but not in the same numbers, but there's other variables, because they have to get to school on time to get the breakfast. We've had an issue with our buses.
We've had an issue with that.
Details.
So that's a factor, that we don't know how that plays into it. And so this year, we might have a better number from that. I mean, that has been a factor. They just haven't been able to get down to the cafeteria. A lot of the buses are showing up when, you know, five minutes before class starts.
They haven't, they haven't had to, you know, discard a lot of things, though, for breakfast, have they, because of it?
Oh, I, I don't know that they had. I think once they, that's been a fairly stable number through, through the year. I mean, there's days that, you know, they get surprised when all the buses are late or a snow day, and that they've had that, but not, they haven't had a very erratic thing. But it has been much lighter. It's not in the same percentage as, as the lunch. It's, it's maybe a ten percent of the eligibles are going for breakfast.
Okay, all right.
In that range, much lower participation.
And so that cost is, is kind of offset by the number of students who maybe purchase breakfast? Do we have, do we have much purchase of breakfast?
It's much more on the free and, and reduced to participate in breakfast, and much lower on the paid overall for breakfast. Just not as many paid kids go down for the breakfast, but the free and reduced are taking some advantages of it. And that's a big positive of the program, is that the kids are getting something healthy in the morning to eat.
Yeah. Okay, all right. I just wanted to-
One of the issues you raised was the, the long lines, which is true when my kids were in high school, and it's still true. Does Quest have any brilliant ideas on how to-
I don't know. I think they need the experiments at first, and, you know, the person we have in charge of the, of the operation, Elena Hildreth, is a former Aramark employee, and she was really liked at, at both buildings. She's, she's a very efficient person. I think she, she may have some new ideas. I don't know.
I know, it's really weird.
They may package things differently to accommodate the, the speed through the lines. So I, I actually haven't talked to them about that part of it yet, so.
We're just curious as to whether, because I, it's a huge issue. That in and of itself could increase the participation.
Especially if you've got a popular thing, you know, all the kids want that, and-
This brings up another, something I, is our lunch period, are they long enough?
Well.
Well, I'm just, I mean, we said-
The problem with making them longer is that now you're starting kids very, very early for lunch. You know, it's, is it breakfast or is it lunch? And we already, I mean, I think to accommodate-
It's limited by the facility, too.
Yeah, it is.
You have to be able to house-
So many students.
So many students in the facility at one time.
They back against a resource period.
It feels very adequate.
They're, they're more than long enough. I've been in places where we have altered schedules. They, it gets much longer than that, and it becomes a supervision issue, because now they're lined up with free time in a free space, and it's even worse.
The fine line.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily assume that if you had a little bit more time, that that would necessarily address the issue in any way, in terms of, of, kids have, yeah, it's a long line, but I've got enough time to go through it. We wouldn't see that playing out to the positive.
Because we give seniors lunch, go-kart kids, they get the full period, they don't even go get in line. They go sit in their seat for ten, fifteen minutes, and then go get it at the last part of the first lunch. The lines are not that long, except Terry brings it, if they're having something that everybody wants, that's when the lines are on their-
Well, I hope we have that problem. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mike, if I could add, there's a lot of variables in that. Five years ago, kids could walk into lunch and buy french fries, and just french fries. Didn't have to buy, and so many kids ate french fries and cookies. So when you look at those sales, I would argue that the sales are down because they, the things they want to buy, they can't.
They can't.
And the things that they deem, that the government deems healthy, they don't deem good. I would say the kids that aren't eating now are bringing sack lunches of peanut butter sandwiches and grapes and stuff.
Semi-good for them.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
Five years ago, french fries and cookies, that was a meal for probably twenty percent of the kids.
Yeah, I can see that.
I had soy burgers.
I can, too.
Okay, so more at the beginning of next year?
Right, we just wanted to kind of lay out some of the factors now and get like a little primer here, and then I think we'll have to do a, a repeat of this a little bit, but then just a more full-blown thing with some options to consider in January.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Freedom of information requests?
Yes, Dr. Cupka, the district had two freedom of information requests last month, and both were fulfilled.
Thank you. Consent agenda, does any member of the board wish to discuss anything further on the consent agenda? Nat, do we hear a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Mike moves, Rick seconds.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Julia Buckman?
Aye.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
Nancy Cuppen?
Aye.
Moving on to the resolution of intent to issue one and a half million dollar funding bonds.
Mark again.
Right. Really, this is just a follow-up to what we, I covered kind of at length in the last meeting, where we went through the tentative budget and the, the plan to refund our two thousand and four bonds, save a little over two million dollars in terms of interest costs, because of lower interest rates, that we can now issue some other bonds at, and those rates seem to be holding. We did have check and market today. There is some talk about the Fed changing some things at their level, so everybody's a little nervous about interest rates, so I'm glad we are able to move ahead with this tonight, because it'll get us one more month into the, out of the interest rate risk range if they do make some changes. In fact, the end of this week, there's supposed to be an announcement that might start to shake the stock markets up a little bit, which, which could go, you know, into this whole thing. But I think overall, it's not going to be a big move if it does. I think we'll still have a very significant savings, even if it were to change. So this is, this is the, the resolution that just declares our intent to refund the bonds and also to issue funding bonds. It gives individuals in the community an opportunity to, if they want, petition us to put it to a referendum. That's a key part of this. It's, it's unlikely for that to happen, quite honestly. We've, we've, in the past, we've not even had anybody bring a petition to us for this, but it gives them the opportunity, and it also gives them the opportunity to come and speak to the board when we approve a parameters resolution, which will be the next piece of this, which will authorize the board president and superintendent to approve the issuance of the funding bonds within certain interest rate parameters and cost parameters, so to make sure that we, we stick to this original plan and, and, but it gives the district the opportunity to wait for the right day in the market to go in and sell it. And so it's, it's a small issue, it should be a pretty fast thing. But it gives the opportunity, when that resolution is being approved, to have a hearing and to speak to the board about it. And so it's, it's necessary to take that action tonight for us to get the ball rolling. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions?
I think you explained it quite clearly last month.
Yeah, last meeting.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Oh, thank you. It's exciting, actually. It's good to do.
I moved, Terry moves?
I move that we issue one point five two five million in funding bonds.
Do we have a second?
Second. Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
Julia Buckman?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cuppen?
Aye. Moving on to old business, budget discussion?
It's actually, we included this item on the agenda, simply to allow the board, if they wish, to continue to discuss the budget presentation Mark made last month. We aren't able to pass the budget, or have a hearing on the budget tonight, because the length between the July and August meeting was not long enough. So that will take place in September.
Okay.
And this is simply an opportunity, if the board has more questions or wishes to discuss further, it can.
Nope.
Thorough discussion.
Hearing none? Superintendent Sedgley?
Yes, unfortunately, the date that I thought Dr. Attia agreed to, he did, apparently he thought he did not, so. Part of the, yes, that's just part of the gouge. We have, I, I have a number of dates that I, I wrote down that he offered me over the Some are Fridays, some are Saturdays. Not necessarily recommended on those days, but there are a fair number of Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and-
Is it fair to ask every member of the board to get back to Julie this week with their availability?
You know what? It would be better, I think, for me, and maybe Julie, too, if we could narrow it down to a few more, a few of these days, because, you know, yin and yang on every one of them is just going to be a pain in the neck for everybody.
Well, I would actually suggest maybe we think about doing it over, like a doodle, where you just list them all.
Yeah. What, just say, "I can't make X," or "The days you can make it."
Or "The days you can."
Could I ask one question? We are having a workshop, right, on the, whatever that Monday is, the eighth?
September eighth.
That's, so that's a regular workshop date.
Well, we're no longer meeting on the fourth, correct?
Right, right, because he can't be here.
Right, that's the only day he can't do.
Right.
The eighth was already, there's, you already had things you needed to include, correct? On the eighth?
Yes, and I, I think we will talk about that in the next, the new business item.
Okay.
We, we do need our workshop meetings.
Okay.
And we're falling behind in some of the reports that people believe we need to make. And so I, whereas in the past, this has been a workshop meeting at, at this point in time, it's kind of a hardship to make it a workshop.
You just can't do it, okay.
Well, we're, one of the reasons our, our recent meetings have gone late is because we haven't been able, had, we haven't had that second opportunity earlier in the month to review some of the-
Right, I understand.
So if, if the board wishes to do that, of course, you have the, it's your purview.
So if, if the board wishes to do that, of course, you have the, it's your purview, however, I'd recommend not, if possible, simply because there are a number of reports that we need to make, some of which you've requested previously, some of those, some of which are things we do every year, but we just haven't had a workshop meeting, really, since April, since the May one was for training as well.
Now, in September the 22nd is our business meeting?
Right.
Yes.
What about the 15th, no?
It's not a date he has.
So can we just ask everybody to look?
Right.
And send Julie, is that, will that work for you, Julie?
Personally, I would prefer we do it earlier than later, just because we're already a little bit.
Actually, Nancy, given that we have two board members who aren't here this evening, it's probably a good idea that we do, as you're suggesting.
I, I will contact Dr. Atia and make sure he sends the, I know, board feedback forums out this week, so.
We can at least get that done.
There's no reason he can't begin compiling that information.
Sure, because I haven't received anything yet.
I don't think he's sent anything yet.
Okay.
No.
And it may just come, we might just have to set a date, and that's the date.
And just do it.
And just do it. That may, that may have to come to that, hopefully not, but it may just have to.
I do know that he, the, the way he does it, he's able to consider everybody's input and writing.
Yeah.
So.
So again, let's get back to Julie, and Julia, would you reach out to, could I ask you to reach out to Keith and Debbie?
Yes.
Just remind them, thank you.
And would you do it in September?
Summer workshop meetings.
Well, again, Dr. Cupka and I talked last week, and she was somewhat concerned about the length of our board meetings in May, June, and July. I think we did a good job during the school year of making them as efficient as possible, and most of them are under two hours, but the last couple of meetings, they've creeped up to 9:30, quarter to 10, 10, and that's also including closed session beginning at 6:30, which makes it a long night, and, you know, obviously, we're aware that, that we need to be very focused in our presentations, where we need, it's probably an area we need to improve on, in terms of reducing the time, as long as we cover all the important material. But the same token, because we don't have workshop meetings in the summer, it does put a lot of pressure on the board meeting, and I would say, historically, where when I was a principal, that there wasn't as, quite as much business in, in the summer as there is now, there was no state of the district report, and some of the initiatives going on were not going on at that time, and, and really, the summer meetings were relatively short, even without the, even without the summer workshop meetings. But more recently, as, a number of different initiatives we've been participating in, and, and with the state of the district report, and the report, and the superintendent's evaluation, some of those other things, it puts more pressure on the, on those summer meetings to include a lot of different material and information. Obviously, the strategic plan, which we didn't have 10 years ago, is, is another venue that puts a lot of pressure on those meetings, because those reports are critical. And, so, you know, obviously, this is an opportunity for the board to discuss, is, you know, understanding we need to work on making our reports concise, does, is the board interested in meeting more often in the summer to reduce this issue, or is it not?
I'll, I'll start off by saying, I, I think, I'm not always articulate as I'd like to be, and as succinct as I'd like to be, but I think for the most part, my impression of the presentations has been good, and that they haven't been that drawn out, and, and there's an awful lot of work that goes on that needs to be presented, and I would hate, looking back at, at presentations we've had this summer, I would hate to have anything abbreviated, for the sake of us getting done quicker. And so I, I, I think that if the board's interested in, in shorter meetings, that we need to add some workshops or something, because I wouldn't, I can't think of much content I would take out, and I can't, I can't think of any, any of our, our presenters, both those here this evening, as well as those at other meetings, I mean, I don't, I don't get the sense that they ramble on like I do.
That's true.
So.
That's true.
True there.
So, so you didn't need to agree so, but.
I think, I agree with you, but I think that after, since everyone here, including staff, you know, usually start our, everybody starts their days at 6, 7 a.m.
Exactly.
I, myself, am not thinking too clearly by 9 a.m., and I think that some of the discussion we have, and some of the discussions we can have, could be more robust if we were not under this incredibly long.
Why couldn't we add one in June?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be the perfect month.
One or two, you know.
You know.
I would personally suggest that we schedule one for every month, and then if we don't need it, we don't need it.
We don't need it, we don't have it.
There you go.
Right, yeah.
Definitely, I think so.
I don't mind, you know, coming an extra evening to hear some of these really great presentations, I mean, you know.
We need to hear them.
Yes.
I think finding out about some of the things that are going on is, is extremely important.
Yes.
To all of us.
And a lot of the research has to be compiled after the year's over, so it's like they, they're giving us a snapshot of the whole year, the only time to present it would be in the summer.
In the summer.
In the summer, so.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
And, and if, and if there maybe isn't enough for one presentation, you know, maybe some of the other things that Mark has on the docket for the fall can go in during the summer.
Project, slide them in.
Well, it's kind of my next thing I'd like to bring up, is the agenda, can we talk about that here, or do we have to wait?
I think it's new business, it's not on the agenda, but I don't see a reason why we can't.
Well, you know, we have the annual board agenda at the, is posted, or the calendar of board actions is posted at the end of the parking lot, and one of the things that I've heard and agree with, from, I've heard from most of the board members and agree with, is that we just need a little more time to sometimes think and talk about things. So just looking at, for instance, and I'm not saying that, and, and I know that we have restrictions because of one thing or another, certain, certain things may have restrictions, but for instance, we have a tentative budget presented and a budget hearing adoption from the following month. Is there any way we can make that a two-month lag? Or textbooks presented and textbooks adopted, or tentative levy and levy hearing. So we're, we're, we're cruising along at a very quick pace, where if a board member has a question, or says, hey, wait a second, I'm not really sure I agree with this, or I want a little more information, we don't really have any wiggle room. I'd like to, and I'd like to challenge us to take a look at the annual board agenda and see if we can't build in a little bit longer review period, working back from the date when you have to have, you know, you have to have the budget posted on such and such a date, maybe instead of working one month back, or two months back, or some such thing like that. Does that make sense?
Actually, that was, we came to talk about that at, at the September workshop.
Okay.
Oh.
We're ahead of the game.
So, that, we, I think you brought that up earlier.
If I wasn't spending so much time here on these meetings, I would have remembered it.
Okay.
I, I have excellent ideas.
Yeah.
So, I, thank you.
Okay.
Can I, we're under new business, and, so, I don't know if the, if Nancy, if you'd entertain this or not, but just maybe a quick, knowing that school's about to start, how, our feeling for how things are going with, with setting up our new buses, bus routes, all that, is, can I have?
Feelings are really positive right now.
Because no suits are going to turn it off.
All promises have been made, we'll see if promises.
Actually, we have been monitoring very closely, as you might expect, getting into weekly and, and a couple times a week discussions with them. First student has, has told us they have drivers for all the daily runs already locked in.
That's good news.
They have, there's a couple runs that are done on a daily basis, but there's specials, like, there's a 2:30 special ed pickup at each campus, and there's a TCD bus that runs, and, and the way that it works, is the bus drivers are able to select which route they want, I guess it's one, one of the perks that they can give to the drivers to retain them, help retain them, is they let them pick their routes. And so those are the last ones that always get picked, and there's, there are new drivers in the pipeline to, to take those.
Okay.
And they also have subs that are available, so they, they feel that they will cover our daily runs, right out of the box, and everybody I've talked to at the buildings were just, anecdotally, has said they've seen individual, the buses running the routes and practice routes, there's been a big, a good amount of activity, which we hadn't seen in the past with the private carrier, they are running the routes, they are doing it, so we have a high level of confidence. In fact, they've told 58, 68, all of us, that they have everybody covered this year, so they, and they, they do, we are paying a premium, we're paying a premium so that they can pay a premium to their bus drivers, and, and so we have every confidence that they're doing. I spoke to the, the terminal manager here Friday, and confirmed that they have all these things in place, I'll talk to her again this week and make sure that nothing's changed, but they, they feel very comfortable.
I wouldn't call it a premium, if, if, if that's what needs to be paid to get the job done right. I mean, there's a minimal level of expectation, and, and we, we need to meet that, and we haven't, and I'm hopeful that we, we get there, so this is, if that's, you know, yes or no.
Fair to say this is much more expensive, it's a more expensive contract.
I get it.
It is.
The community did not, nor did any of us.
Right.
Appreciate the outcome of the savings.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Fingers crossed.
Okay, I think it's time for the second reception of visitors, this is the opportunity for anybody to address the board on any subject. Hearing none, we'll go on to communications and announcements, Mr. McTuneson's not here, do we have any update on Lund?
Well, Lund does not meet during the summer, but Lund has been active in monitoring legislation.
Mm-hmm.
I believe the first formal meeting is at the last Friday in September.
Okay.
And that has typically been a meeting where.
Legislator.
Legislators from the area are invited, and they make brief presentations, and the member superintendents and board members are able to ask them questions. In the past, it's been a good meeting, and they're working on setting it up at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McDonald. Julia, Sessom in Illinois Humanities?
The only thing I know about Sessom is that they had their orientation meeting on Friday, I guess it was a big success, but we, we did not meet as a board in July, so at least they're off and running.
Julia, does Sessom have a, a board of directors, what's their, their status?
Oh, yes, the board is composed of representative from each of the 18-member districts, and I think we're one of the few special ed co-op boards that is composed of both school board members and administrators. Some, some of them, sorry, I can't talk, some of them have smaller executive boards, and then larger governing boards, and that's the way Sessom was organized years and years ago, but then when it was reorganized, it's now this one board. So it's interesting, because we get a very interesting perspective from both the superintendents and the board members.
There's a board of 18 people, then?
Yes, a member from each representative district, and it's roughly 50/50, board members and, and superintendents, and we do, they try to keep it sort of that even balance, and we meet once a month, sometimes more often if we need to, but it's basically once a month, the fourth Wednesday of every month, and, so we will be meeting, actually, next week.
Okay.
Glad you asked.
Just curious.
And which brings me to the parking lot idea that was sort of withdrawn because we were so busy, is at some point to have Dr. Volpe come and make a 20-minute presentation with us.
You mentioned that before.
Mm-hmm, he's very willing to do that, and it's been a while since he was here. We've got a lot of new technology going on.
He hasn't been here since I've been superintendent, I think.
Wow, time does fly, so we should.
That'd be very, that'd be very appropriate for him to come.
I noticed on our last, on our, in our last bill register, we just sent like 600 and some thousand dollars to Sessom, so.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, we're a pretty major player.
Exactly.
In, in their, their organization, I think, I'd like to hear from, from him.
That's right.
So.
That's one of the big reasons why I'd like to have him come, and.
Sure.
Lots of new programs going on, and it's a growing program, so absolutely, I will make sure that if, if we think there's time in one of our upcoming workshops, to make that date available to him, or Dr. McDonald.
Certainly will.
That would be great.
Excellent, you're good.
Thank you. Did you have anything from Illinois Humanities?
We have not met, we will be meeting in September, so I'll have more to report.
Terry, anything on the Education Foundation?
Yeah, our big thing is, is that we're going to have a membership push, so if you know of anyone in the community, or, or anyone out there who would be interested in being on the District 99 Education Foundation, please contact either myself or, or Dr. McDonald, and we would be happy to have you come to a meeting and find out what we're all about and that, because we do need community members to make this a strong organization, and so that's our, our big push right now. So, seriously, if you know of anyone who would like to contribute to the community in that way, it would be a good opportunity.
Are there some types of people that would really be beneficial, that you're looking for, you know, different expertise?
Just people who are interested in, in helping our students.
We would always, yeah, I, I think it has been very helpful, they have some people from business world, some of the, even the, whether we always agree with them or not on the fundraising, they've had some really good ideas.
Yeah.
We currently have an attorney on the foundation, that's very helpful. We actually need someone who's got some financial expertise, because our treasurer's having to step down.
Okay.
For other family commitments, so, you know, as Terry said, obviously, people who